All those things make me up again and again. Without me, they cannot handle it. There's the proven again and again. How come I'm the councilman?
We're live.
Alright, good afternoon, everyone. Today is August 1st, 2025, and it's 4:06 PM. I call this meeting, Hamtramck City Council to order. This is a special city council meeting. Would the clerk call the rules, please?
Is your mic on? Can you tap it?
No, it's on, but I don't feel like it's working. It's green, but it's not working.
There's not too many people. This voice is loud anyway.
That's weird. Oh, there you go. I got it.
You got it?
I got it.
Alright, now it's working. Okay. Alright, good evening, everyone, or good afternoon. I call this special meeting of Hamtramck City Council to order. Today is August 1st, 2025, and it's 4:07 PM. Would the clerk call the rules, please?
Mr. Mayor, before I call the rules, can I read the little short message that Khalid sent me to read? "Good afternoon, everyone. I respectfully submit this statement to inform the mayor, council, and all attendees that I will not be able to attend a special council meeting scheduled for this afternoon. Due to short notice and my prior commitments, I am unfortunately out of town and unable to participate. I appreciate your understanding and want to affirm my continued commitment to serving the residents of Hamtramck and alongside my colleagues." So with that said, Rafai is not here. Councilman Rafai, Councilman Musa?
Yes.
Councilman Sidman?
Yes.
Councilman Mahmoud?
Yes.
Councilman El Samiri?
Ah, yes.
Councilman Hassan?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, we have a forum.
Thank you. Please rise for the clerk of the regents. I am a regent of the United States of America. It is public, for which it stands. A nation that is not divisible, divisible by... Thank you. Do we have any community announcements? Anything about the elections?
Yes, we are very busy today, and we're probably going to be very busy tomorrow. We are open from 8 o'clock to 4 o'clock tomorrow only for election business. We did have lines out the door all afternoon today, so good job at that. Today was the last day to be able to mail out an AV ballot, so we can no longer mail out AV ballots. If you need a ballot, you have to come in and pick one up. If you pick it up, you don't want to vote it at home, you can take it to the election with you, vote it at the election, and all ballots are due by 8 o'clock Monday. Do you have any questions?
It's not working. It's gonna be Sunday.
Not working, Sunday, not working. You want me to work Sunday, too?
Yeah.
Yeah? I hope I make it a live Tuesday when I drive home after the election.
What do you mean to say if all ballots are due by the Monday?
What do I mean?
Yeah. I mean, you say all ballots are due?
When you submit your ballots, due by 8 o'clock?
Yes.
To turn in your ballot, to count?
By Tuesday.
Tuesday?
You said Monday, that's what I said.
Oh, I thought you said Election Day, sorry. So yeah, Election Day.
I got it now.
Election Day.
If people come Monday, they can move also far?
You can pick up a ballot?
Yeah.
Yeah. That's it.
Alright, sounds good. Any other announcements? Alright, any proclamations, recognitions? No? Any additions or deletions to the agenda?
Yes.
Yes.
Can we add the cross-section?
We already have one.
We have one, alright, yeah. Alright, thank you. Alright, anything else? Alright, public comments, do we have any?
Fatah, Hamad, Jabed?
Yes.
Jabed or Jabed?
Jabed.
Jabed? Can you push the button on the mic, please? Yes.
I have a problem with the opposition. They gave me a car rental because of the situation. I took the car and returned it. I thought it was mine. They said I have two. Two. One from 2022 and one from 2024. Even though I asked them to give me a warning, they told me to leave. I tried to get it today, but I thought it was mine. They said I have two. I called the responsible person. They said I can't do anything. I thought it was mine. They said if you have the money, you can't do anything. They said I can't do anything. The second thing, they said if you delayed, even though I'm Adam, I gave you pictures, the pictures were on the phone, and they told me to leave.
Where is it? The car and the other?
No, no, this is the house. The car rental and the rental. These are the opposition. The door is the garage, and the second one is the car rental.
Did you clean it?
I cleaned it and it's here. They said, "You're done right now."
Oh, he just translated for...
For two years, he said, "I have two."
So I was trying to pay his ticket that his car got towed during the sweep in the street. So he was paying the ticket, and then he was surprised that there are two pending tickets two years ago. And he said he came at that time for the grass and went for the garage door or something. And he fixed them and told me he was good to go, but they still on the record. So I think you can talk to that attorney, and he will help you out. Shukran. Thank you.
Shukran.
That's it for public comment.
Alright. Council's agenda. This is a single motion, no discussion. We had approval of minutes from the July 8th, 2025, regular city council meeting. Approval of invoice register date ending July 22nd, 2025. Approval of pre-approved expenditure date ending July 22nd, 2025. Resolution 2025-89 approving appointments and reappointments to boards and commissions. Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, and those three appointments are just confirming the approval, right?
They'll come later to the city hall for their oath.
Okay. Alright, no public hearing. And the new business, we have Resolution 2025-90 approving action regarding Wayne County rate of first refusal of properties.
Offer.
Alright.
Any questions?
An explanation for that?
No questions?
No.
Okay. Councilman Hassan?
Yes.
Councilman El Samiri?
Ah, yes.
Councilman Mahmoud?
I'm not sure. I thought maybe you can give some questions.
So can we reverse a little bit, then?
Yeah, you can.
You have, how many properties are there? Five, six?
Yeah, there's five properties, and two of them are in residential districts. Three of them are in commercial district. So this is just our standard procedure where we can take them first before Wayne County would sell them or auction them. Generally, we propose an option for these properties ourselves. This is, I'll point out, you know, three of the five are commercial properties. So some cities do opt to encourage economic development of the parcels by issuing requests for proposals, which we could explore. And I've talked a bit about with interim city manager. We could essentially ask a developer to, you know, develop a certain kind of project and sell that. Maybe we want to see these three lots that are right next to each other be used for affordable housing up top and retail on the bottom or different things that would really strengthen the corridor. So this is just one of the rare opportunities where cities sometimes choose to try to direct a little bit more what we want to see really good of the neighborhood. So we have options.
Thank you. So I saw some presidents talking on the social media about this and saying, "Leave them for auction." We do auction, too, when we buy them. It's not like we buy them for the city and just keep them there. And this way, we prioritize, you know, things for our residents in Hamtramck instead of leaving them for Wayne County and then everybody can bid on them from the whole county. So there's still gonna be an auction, just like every year, and residents are welcome to, you know, apply for anything.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Since discussion opened, I'll tell the history of this. Why we are doing this? Big story. There's no clue. First, we brought it. Why we take it? Who take it? Wayne County want to help us, Hamtramck City. So if they go auction, they get a lot of money. So it's our guys. We have a commitment that time. We, anything from Hamtramck, any property goes, we're gonna give it to you. Whatever tax money they behind, just give me that, and we'll give you, and you do. Yeah, so, and we set the criteria here. If there is the primary residence, if anybody lose situation, money problem, sickness, city first offer them to keep those people their ownership, work with the Hamtramck City and those people. Then, after that, we go the auction. So just for clarification, this was the previous practice.
We were able to help, and you remember?
Yeah, it's up to us. How we gonna do it? It's up to us. We also want to get first priority, too. That was the previous practice, too?
Okay.
Then we purchase for the minimum rent price, and then it gives the local government the option to get more revenue.
And if we say, "We get, city make more money, city get the money." How could we decide that one later?
In 2022, we had many properties, and I was misinformed by, you know, administration here that we, it's just gonna cost us liability and administrative fees, so leave them for Wayne County. And I insisted that we should buy them to prioritize giving them to our residents. And then it turns out that the money is for us, not for Wayne County, when we put them for auction. And that year alone, we bought them for $48,000, and we sold them for $450,000. So actually, the city benefits. Yes, it costs a little bit of administrative work and stuff, but we benefit from that, and we help our residents as well.
I thought I'd call about it today from a resident asking. You've probably seen the same Facebook post or something like that. So it's a standard practice across all cities and local government units in Michigan. It's part of state law that this process happens, so.
Again, Mr. Chair, this is the one first that we then have permission to buy.
Yes.
After that, the resolution come.
It's our decision, yeah.
So okay.
So we can go ahead and vote.
Okay, before I do that, do you mind? I did have an email that I forgot to read during public comment that's relating to this.
Yeah, we can suspend the rule.
My name is... You gotta do a motion to suspend the rules in a second.
Who motion?
Council Hassan.
My name is Ahmar Ali, living on Holm Street. I would like to send my comment on Resolution 2025-90 for the city to take Wayne County properties. Please refuse it and let it go to auction so the city residents can buy them and build on them. There has been some concerns that the city... Oh, you know what? He updated that, and I don't want to read that last paragraph because it might not be correct. So I'm gonna read his updated one. My name is Ahmar Ali, a resident in Hamtramck. I would like, I would just ask that the auction is public and open, not closed envelope. This way, people know how much they can bid without going overboard. And then also, just to mention, before he comes at me, Abraham Al-Jahim did send me an email, but it was empty, so there's nothing to read on that part. That's it. So can I go ahead and go ahead for the votes?
I have to make a comment for that public comment. Nobody gonna dictate us what we have to do. Very clear.
I mean, it's a...
It's just a public comment.
I know. My comment, too, that's all.
But it is for the people, remember?
Yeah, our city officer, they know what they have to do. Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. Councilman Hassan?
Yes.
Councilman El Samiri?
Ah, yes.
Councilman Mahmoud?
Yes.
Councilman Sidman?
Yes.
Councilman Musa?
Yes.
Council, oh, Councilman Rafai is not here. Mr. Mayor, Resolution 2025-90 approved.
Thank you. Next one, Resolution 2025-91 approving the purchase of battery-powered extrication equipment. Can I get a motion, a motion, in a second?
Motion.
I got a motion.
Full second. You got the motion?
Yes, El Samiri?
Ah, Musa.
Right?
Yes.
Alright, go.
Good afternoon. This is the second part of our purchase. The extrication equipment, it was a set of four tools. We broke the purchase up over two budget cycles to spread it out. This is, like I said, the second set, and we budgeted $30,000 for it. We came in just under at $29,533. This will completely update our extrication equipment, and it will also allow us to expand our setup a little bit where we can have extrication equipment now on three pieces of apparatus instead of just one as we had in the past. So we're kind of being more diverse and being more flexible with our response.
Is it coming for the amount plan, or is it...
Yeah, it's coming. Federal fund, yes.
How much?
How's your money look like, Mr. Chair?
It was already budgeted in this year.
Alright.
Councilman Musa?
Yes.
Councilman Mahmoud?
Yes.
Councilman El Samiri?
Ah, yes.
Councilman Hassan?
Yes.
Councilman Sidman?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, Resolution 2025-91 approved.
Thank you. Thank you. Alright, we come to the end of the new business, and we move to reports. I don't have much to say, and I wanna save your time. I know people are busy, they want to go. But I wanna say good luck to all the candidates in this election, and I hope that people go out and vote, choose whoever you think is qualified person, and good luck to everyone now. Nothing much to say to the public, but I wanna make it short. Mayor Porton is not here, so if anyone of you guys wants to say something, go ahead.
Keep it short and soon. I just wanna say, Mr. Mayor, community, as we know, election is around the corner, so... Back when the clerk, we still have lots of apps and developed out there. This app media app can develop. Your voice, your voice, your voice. So regardless who you voting for, this, you know, send your ballot. It's their last effort and last extra money from the city to mail it out to you, and if you don't submit it back to them, that's going to mean nothing to you. So please submit your ballot, and good luck, vote, and give it one.
Thank you.
Dear resident, do you have the ballot, absentee ballot? I just suggest you don't post it. Come to the city hall and drop it. If you post it today, it's not gonna make it in Tuesday. We have a bad experience last time. Council Hassan knows very well, and City Clerk Rana knows. There will are men holding in the postal office. They don't have enough men who are delivered to the city hall. So I highly suggest to each and everyone, please drive a little forward, come to the, from the city hall and put in the city hall box, drop box. And I'm running for again. Last 10 years, you support me. I need your more support to...
Like you can't do that.
Oh, sorry.
Sorry. Sorry. Alright, so with that, anyone else? Yes, Councilman Hassan, go ahead.
So thank you, Mr. Abu Musa. That time, thanks clerk, too. Clerk has to go to the postal office, and she saw the bucket of sitting right there. So, and she brought it, and that's the good thing.
You're talking about the year that they got backed up?
Right.
You thought I was shirting ballots? And then we found out.
No, I was telling her. She said, "Not receiving mail."
Yeah.
I said, "Maybe it's there somewhere." And she go there, and that's all. They are sitting right there. So anyway, that's a good thing. Double check again this year also.
Hand-delivered.
Yeah. Well, also, please, postal officials, so communicate with them. See, in case you surprise visit to them and see there. That's the good thing. Second, the candidate who is running for Hamtramck City, I see the Facebook, and they are promised. So I'm requesting them to first read Sutter. When you're saying something, same thing I did 2009. Before I say something, I read the Sutter. And I came here, that time Nazarko was the finance director. I take the buzzet from Nazarko and read it line by line. Then I told what I can do. So please, don't help the residents. You're gonna do everything, but there is the limitation. There is the criteria. There is the Sutter. Hamtramck City run by the Sutter. We just follow the Sutter, make the law, and oversee the buzzet and oversee the anything going wrong. And nothing you can do better than that. So, okay? Some can read telling, reduce the tax. There is no way you can reduce the tax. No question about it. So first, go learn, please. Read it, then, and you can say. If you say buzzet, you did not, nobody knows the buzzet. As of now, if I don't get the Wayne County jail money, $1.4 million, there is the $300,000 short right now. So, so don't tell the people, "Come, and I'm gonna change everything." So please, please read, educate yourselves, then tell the people, do not make the people confused. Thank you.
Thank you. And on that topic, I remember here in my election 2021 that hundreds of ballots did not come back to the residents. And I used to come to the clerk, and she would say, "It was sent out already." And it took a week, 10 days, and they never received it. And I ended up having to take all these people out, elderly people, women, everybody to go out. It was hundreds of ballots. So that thing that was kept in the postal office raised a question about whether it was done purposely or not, because I suffered that time big time. And it was a huge issue for us and for the community, because I would know by the list she would send to me that the ballots were sent out to the people.
List.
And then when I called those people or go knock on their doors to return the ballots, to ask them to return the ballot, they would say, "We never received them."
So let me also add, well, we have really been really close with the postal office since we've had issues. We even included the state in complaints to the postal office, so they've really been active with us. So what they do now, many times, they don't even, when they collect ballots locally from postal, like mailboxes that you guys drop them off in, they don't put it through the whole system anymore. They don't send it out to Plymouth. They don't take all the boxes, send it out to Plymouth to go through their assembly line of separations of mail. They keep all the ballots directly locally. They pick them out, and they bring them to the city hall. So they're keeping them local. They're trying to avoid the whole roundabout of traveling ballots.
I'm just saying like...
But still, accidents happen with the postal office. I don't know what happens in there. It's not up to us, but I promise you, every ballot that we give you a list saying that it goes out, it goes out. Once it's out our door, it's beyond our...
I understand. That's what you kept telling me, and I believe you. But I was like concerned, because it was like mainly the families that I was, you know, asking them to vote for me, and they never received them back, although it shows in the list that it was sent out. And so I had to hire people to help those elderly people to take them during the election day, you know, and take them out to vote. That was a big issue for us, that I hope it doesn't happen again. Well, with that...
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'm sorry. Since you promised our clerk one hour, I wanna keep one hour, let me talk a little more. So since you guys discussed this, I wanna tell you again. My mayor election, my cousin, my uncle, okay? They returned the ballot, Hamtramck City. After one week, same thing. I talked to them, okay? They said they returned it. So I came to the city clerk office. They said they didn't got it. Then I tell my uncle and my nephew to come city hall and vote. That time, city hall, we are voting. Then came, they came, and the clerk said, "Oh, yeah, yeah, the two ballots is here."
Not me.
Not you.
Thank you.
Abdul Karim, Abdul Kadir, Abdul Mahboud. So they're gone. So there is, if a smart candidate like me, I take the list from the clerk before, and one week after election satisfied the Wayne County, I take again, and I double-check one by one. And that two vote was never, report showing was received. So never, if you don't receive, how are you gonna count? So it's not, it's not this clerk, okay? Just was telling. So when people say corruption, the corruption was there. When people say corruption, 2012, I mean, 13, I believe. I took the two photo, one for council, one for mayor. Gadjali running for mayor. Me and Gadjali has a good understanding. So from the city clerk, send the letter to me. You cannot withdraw the mayor position. You have to withdraw the council position. Completely unethical, unconstitutional. That's letter went to the Michigan State. Michigan State right away tell that our city manager remove the election clerk right now. We had a meeting. Election clerk, very good, she don't know that much. Somehow wrote the letter. It's the discrimination. Then we have a meeting, top floor, and she came. Then all the elected official and mayor asked me, "Do you wanna fire her?" I said, "No, no." How is she gonna go now? I want her to retire. She was crying. She hold me a long time. Then mayor asked me, "You wanna sue the Hamtramck City?" Because I got the letter. I said, "No, I'm not that, that kinds of person to sue. I, I forgive her." And that time, we have a majority. We can fire her. We did not fire her, we left her with the pension because of senior citizen, why we have to do it. So that kinds of person we are, not, not, not the fire him, fire him. No, we are not that kinds of person. Thank you.
Alright, thank you so much. And with that, I would like to mention an important thing that caused some concerns to, to some residents that, you know, doing, knocking doors by our police department at this time is not, is not acceptable during the election because it intimidates the people, it scares them and they don't wanna vote, they don't wanna go out to vote. I, I don't think there's a need for any kind of investigation at this time. Because it's, people are complaining about that. They are scared and they are intimidated by anything. So I respectfully ask our police department to stay away from any, any actions at this time regarding investigation or anything during the election. I received some complaints from some families and, and others are getting scared. They don't wanna go out to vote because they think people are there to get them. And that's not acceptable at this time, to intimidate the community, to keep them away from election or from voting. And with that...
Mr. Chair, I can, I got a clarification there. Please, sorry. So 2070, there is the 36th, the name, Bengali name of the list. Michigan State Police going house to house. So came to the my house, they don't know me, with the list. So Mohammed Hassan, "Yes, sir, why you here? I just wanna ask you, how you vote?" I said, "Mr. Officer, it is unconstitutional. You cannot ask me how I vote." "This is your ballot?" "Yes, sir, how you get this ballot?" I questioned to him. Then he was thinking, "My God, why I came here?" "So did you close the ballot?" "Unconstitutional. If I don't close, how I mail it?" Okay? Another couple of question. I said, "Do you know who you're talking?" "I'm the mayor candidate, Mohammed Hassan." "One question for you." People, because I'm saying people don't scare. "One question for you." "Does show any name?" "You brought all Bengali name. Show me one name, Yemeni? Show one name you list, African-American? Show me one list, your name, Polish-American, Ukrainian, Albanian?" Hold on. No, you're right. So it was not the discrimination, only profiling. And they dropped the investigation that time, Michigan State, because there is nothing. There is the immigrant community has some misunderstanding maybe. Okay? I saw my experience before set out there. I'm doing this study from 1997. I was with the Mr. Kozar, Mr. Gerizis, Tom Jankowski, Karen Mayaski, with this, all those people. Okay? So 9/11, Gerizis, after my speech, he hold me, from that day, he recognized me. So all those, we don't know nothing, we not run me. So I still taking the list. Used to be like around maximum 500 absentee vote, max. So when I do a study... Still, still we have time.
But Council Hassan, we...
No, 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 this is good thing. He didn't show up until Friday, set out the morning, a report showing 500 came in. Okay? That's it.
Thank you. I was just talking about the rules, a lot of only five minutes report.
Oh, okay.
Sorry. But anyone else wants to talk? Alright, thank you so much and that brings us to the end of our reports.
No public comment.
And no public comments for the second round, so we will go into a closed session. We need a motion.
I get a motion?
Second.
Alright, so...
4:38.